I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting of the Rockingham County Board of Commissioners, our 6th January meeting. Pleased to have you all here, pretty good crowd for Monday right after New Year's. I know some of you are a little anxious about being here, don't be that way. We're all Rockingham County citizens, so we're pleased to have you here. If you will, just check and make sure if you have electronic devices not to include your pacemaker. Cut them off so they don't disturb us during the course of our meeting. And in a moment, I'm gonna ask, well, I'm gonna go ahead and ask Pastor Chris Burns from Draper Pentecostal Holiness Church there in Eden to come on up. And I'll be asking you all to stand, and after he gives that, Navea Dalton is gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd come up Pastor, we'd certainly appreciate it and look forward to your invocation over this meeting.
Father, we come to you today and we thank you for this day. We thank you for everything that you are doing in our lives and how you have blessed us. And Father, we ask for your wisdom in this meeting tonight, God. Your word says that if we lack wisdom or if we need wisdom, that if we will ask of you that you would give it to us liberally. And so, Father, I ask for you to give us the wisdom that we need to make the decisions that need to be made for the best interest of Rockingham County. Lord, we thank you for everything you are doing. Lord, I pray for your blessings and your favor upon every commissioner here. And Father, we just thank you for everything. In your name, in your son's name, we pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to ask everybody to put their hands over their heart and face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Burns and Mrs. Dalton. We appreciate that. Gentlemen, you've had the agenda here for a couple of weeks. You've had the agenda, if you, and we've had time to review it. If there are any changes, please let us know at this time, otherwise I'd be seeking a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Some of you may have noticed that there are only four of us here tonight. Commissioner Hall is a very generous and benevolent sort of person, and he chose not to share his flu germs with the rest of us, and we appreciate that. But best wishes to Charlie Hall and his family there, and hope he recovers well. A great pleasure tonight. We are gonna make a recognition, and I'm gonna ask the Woods family to come forth to include Mrs. Jennifer Woods. Mrs. Jennifer Woods is gonna be sworn in, and I believe her husband's gonna hold the Bible for her, and her son's gonna give her moral support. And we have our resident attorney to administer the oath as Jennifer Woods officially becomes clerk to the Board of Commissioners for Rockingham County. So counselor, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jennifer, you place your left hand on the Bible, raise your arm, and be after me. I, Jennifer Hagey Woods, do solemnly swear.
I, Jennifer Hagey Woods, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
As clerk to the county commissioners of Rockingham County.
As clerk to the county commissioners of Rockingham County.
So help me God. Congratulations.
We're already enjoying the services of Mrs. Woods. She's been heavily counseled and trained by the best folks available, and we look forward to a very positive and long relationship. Thank you for coming on board. Gentlemen, you've also had the consent agenda for the same period of time as the regular agenda. Are there any amendments to that consent agenda? Hearing no suggestions, I will momentarily ask for a motion to approve, but for the general knowledge of those of you attending tonight, consent agenda are those items that we don't feel like require public discussion. However, they are on your agenda as presented out in the hall, and if you have questions about them, please call Lance Meltzer, our county manager, and he'll be glad to fill you in on the details, and if something does need to be readdressed, we will do so. So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Motion for Commissioner Travis, second. Commissioner Pearl, further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed by name. The ayes have it. We now get to public comment. We have two people signed up. Mrs. Dalton, you are in up, so we welcome you forward. I believe you're representing the Beta Club. If you'd come forth and give us your name and address.
Lance, do you want me to read the comment period?
He's got a disclaimer.
Nah, it's okay.
I don't think so, not tonight.
She'll break tonight, Lance. I'm going for the record.
Thank you, Navea.
My name is Navea Dalton, and I would, mm, I'm nervous, I'm sorry. I would like to, okay. Good evening. Mark Richardson, Chairman Mark Richardson, and County Manager Lance Meltzer. My name is Navea Dalton. I am in 7th grade at Holmes Middle School, and I was inducted in the Junior Beta Society. I am here to ask for your support with a project that Ms. Mary Martin will explain. My junior beta society, it's focused on children that have advanced grades and stuff, and that are at school every day, and they have perfect attendance. And now, Ms. Mary, she'll explain the project that we're gonna do to help fund this project, I mean, this organization.
Well, since you trust Mrs. Martin there to make comment, Ms. Mary Martin, would you come forward?
My name is Mary Martin. I live at 702 West Idol Street in the best part of the county, Western Rockingham. I am here with Navea, and you heard her wonderful introduction and welcome, so can we give her a hand? She's a little, she's a little nervous here. I told her that she's among friends. So what she's here about is, she's going to do a project. I am a graduate of the 2019 Citizens Academy, and we're going to do a pet food drive with the Beta Club. So she's here asking that she be able to put a box here in the county. The event will start January 13th and will end on February 14th, and the event is called Guess Who's Coming to Dinner? And we will donate all the proceeds to our Rockingham County Animal Shelter. We're putting boxes at all the municipalities, Madison Meadows, Stoneville, Reesville, and Eden, and we would like to put a box here. I told Navea that we will present it to the board. Y'all will have some discussion as to whether she can do that or not, and she has the box in the back. If anybody has any questions.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion. We allow that box to be placed at the appropriate location here at the governmental center. We have a motion, a second. Mary, do you have City Portier's permission to use Guess Who's Coming to Dinner as the title here?
I've already secured that. Thank you so much, and I will give a flyer to Ms. Brenda, so that, Ms. Jennifer, so that she could have that, and we also have a list of items that the county is asking for. You can review that list, and anything you wish to add, then please do so. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna ask one question before you leave. Are there gonna be boxes anywhere else in the county?
Yes, sir. They'll be at the municipalities, city halls of Madison Meadows, Stoneville, Reesville, and Eden. Ms. Glavin, the mayor of Stoneville, she has asked to put at several places, and if there are other locations that you wish to put that box, just please let her know and she'll put them there. And anybody here that wishes to have your church involved and put a box at your church and collect that, you could collect it, bring it here. We will go around and collect all the pet food on February 14th from all the locations. We just need to know where those locations are. And those of you in the audience, if you choose to have a location, if you'll get that to Ms. Jennifer, she'll get it to us, and we will make sure that that pet food is picked up. Thank you.
Commissioner Travis.
Yes, yes, we said the libraries. Yes, thank you so much. And anybody else with any suggestions, Ms. Jennifer has my email address, or she will before the night is over. So if you choose to be a part of this, because this is a group of young ladies, she asked me to mentor her, and I'm trying to grow us some good leaders for Rockingham County.
Well, I believe if you'll turn around, your superintendent is in the back, and the president of the college, you might wanna talk with him.
Awesome.
Couple of good locations.
I talked to Ms. Kim prior today. I don't know what she got with Dr. Kinnlaw or not, but now he knows.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is we, for success in your program there, Navea, we need the widest dissemination of the project and your boxes. So thank you very much. I think it's a worthwhile project. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Further discussion?
I would say one thing, I think if Ms. Mabel could make sure that gets on the county's website and pushed out from my website about what's going on, maybe reach out to the municipalities, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed by name? I'm very pleased to recognize Lydia Craddock at this time. She's the apprentice Rock Top facilitator with Rockingham County Schools. This is a collaborative program that your commissioners have supported for quite a long time, and it's really going much better, thanks to the collaboration of the county school system and the community college. So Lydia, you're up.
Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to come and just update you on what's happening with Rock Top. Somebody made a comment as we came in the door where we bring in the whole school system, and the answer to that is, we brought a lot of folks, because this is, involves so many different organizations, groups, everyone in the community. So I need to recognize some of the folks that I have here, particularly since some of them are my bosses, just so that you can still hear me. We have Dr. Kenneth Scott. He's the CTE Director for the Rockingham County School System. We have beside him, I think Sheila Regan, and she is a vice president at Rockingham Community College. Then we have Dr. Mark Kinnlaw, who is the president at Rockingham Community College. But I believe beside him is Dr. Shotwell. I don't remember which order they're sitting in, but Dr. Shotwell is the superintendent of Rockingham County Schools. If you come up to the next row, you see Rockingham Community College's apprenticeship coordinator, and that's Ms. Jennifer Lester. All of these folks have integral pieces and parts of this. However, we're talking about Rock Top, and I will try to be very quick, but Rock Top has many working partners. Rock Top stands for Rockingham County Apprenticeship and Technical Opportunities Partnership. It is a true partnership. It does have many partners. It started previously, five, six, seven years ago, with Reset Rockingham. Then also involved is Rockingham County Economic Development, Rockingham County Schools, Rockingham Community College, the Citizens for Economic Development, local chambers of commerce, all of them are involved, and yes, Mary, Western Rockingham is involved. So I see her a lot when I'm out there. Then other local and regional businesses and industries in the area. So this is a partnership. When you hear the term Rock Top, you may think apprenticeship, because that's what we've done a lot of marketing about recently. But I need to make sure that we all know that Rock Top is much more than that. I'd like to clue you in on at least four projects that are going on with Rock Top, because they are occurring with your help as commissioners and with the help of our citizens. First of all, though, before we talk about all of those, the student goal for this is to match our local students to local opportunities for technical education, career employment, and personal growth, to match the students' passions and interests. Now, there will always be a need for students who go away and get their four-year college degrees, because some careers require that before you can enter that career. Currently, we don't have a four-year university in our county, so we do have to allow those folks to go outside of our county. However, there are many other opportunities, particular educational opportunities here in our county, and we want to make sure that we connect our students with what is available, matching our local students to local opportunities. Then the workforce goal, that's a student goal. Our workforce goal is to provide local training for local students to serve the changing workforce development needs in our county, for our local employers. So this is how we are meshing what our public school system is doing with what we need to do in terms of economic development. So my key points tonight, I'll talk to you very briefly about four different projects that are occurring, but I wanna make sure that we all know that there are many programs, many ways to do this. There are many partners. Everybody in this room in some way, manner, shape, or form is a partner. There are lots of puzzle pieces that have to go together, and the parts are moving, because much of what we do is involved with changing state rules and regulations. Y'all are definitely familiar with that because of the type of work that you have to do. So first program that you've probably heard the most about is Rock Top Apprenticeship Program. An apprenticeship means that a student is going to school and working, and they finish with, our apprenticeship program allows them to finish with an associate's degree in manufacturing, advanced manufacturing technology from Rockingham Community College at the same time that they have been fully employed. Takes three to four years, because they're going to school part-time and they are working part-time, but they come out of that program with their no-college debt, and they have that associate's degree. We are in our third year, we are entering our third year. Ms. Jennifer Lester at RCC is managing in the first-year cohort. She's got 15, no, she has 16 students that are in their second full year of college and their second year of work. She, in her second cohort, she has got 15 that are in their first full year of college and full year of work. Right now, we have 30 applicants for Cohort Three looking to, they are competing for approximately 25 apprenticeship positions. Those positions will be announced in the summer when they begin their college work. So that is apprenticeship. It is growing. RCC is willing to look at other opportunities for apprenticeship. It is well-established. Right now, we are approximately, we have 13 companies. We are approximately balanced in terms of the positions that we're looking for and the number of students, qualified students, looking for positions. We need to increase our pipeline of students as we increase our companies that are looking for these positions. I'll talk about pipeline in a minute. That's project number one, Rock Top Apprenticeship Program. We also have Rock Top Career Express. This is one of the newest ones that is still, now, you have more in-depth information on this, so as you go through more in-depth information, if you have questions, please feel free to contact me. But what we're doing is trying to connect students and local employers with credential training and career employment in high-demand fields. When Ms. Lester and I go out and talk to companies, we often find that companies need skilled labor. They need trained labor, but they do not need an associate's degree, but they need a credential. That may be something like a welding credential, or an electrician, or a plumber. So that program, we are working through that. We've been, visited several places that have that, and we're working on it. Hopefully, that will come to pass very quickly. Now, the third one that we're super excited about, three and four, is Rock Top Works. There is a pathway for every student in our school system, whether it is a four-year college, whether it is two-year college, whether it is credential training, or whether it is a career to work, okay? Some of our students do want to go directly to work. And we are working at connecting our graduating seniors with some of the soft skills training that they need before employment. We're connecting companies, students that are looking for employment, and looking at offering soft skills training. Many of our employers will tell us, they will train their folks that they hire, but they need them to come to them at a little higher level in term of employability skills. So that project is working with seniors, and on April 16th, that's the tentative date, the date may change, we are, we have an opportunity for companies that are willing to hire graduating seniors, for the companies and the students to come together. We will have worked with those students on resumes and interviewing. This will not be a job fair where they pick up brochures, but it will be actual interviews to try to place those students, so that if those interviews are successful in April, that gives the month of May for employment issues to be taken care of, job screenings and drug screenings and that, so that when they walk across their graduation stage, they have something to walk to. So that is the third one. But now, do you, I talked about apprenticeship and how we are almost balanced right now with, we have companies that want positions, and we have students that want positions, and we're just about balanced. But we need to see an increase in both of those. We can't increase one without increasing the other. So we are working to increase the exposure of our high school students to hands-on trades, technical positions. And this is with Rock Top Connects. We're looking at connecting high school students and local employers with summer learning and employment opportunities to foster growth in those skilled trades. Again, that is not just connecting a student to a contractor who wants to hire them to be a gopher in the summer. What that is, is that will also, Lord willing, have a job skills training component to it. And we have, in your longer report, you have a list of some of the resources that we are looking at that will help fund that student's employment and fund their soft skills education as we give them an opportunity to explore some of these technical hands-on trades. Because, for example, I would never have known that I wanted to be a welder, because I had never seen anybody weld. So we have a lot of students that don't know what is out there, and this has changed a bit, and a lot of these jobs provide a pretty substantial income. We wanna make sure that all of our students leave our school system with a plan that they act on, not just a plan in their head, whether that's they're enrolled in the four-year college, or they're enrolled in military, or they're in an apprenticeship, or they're in a credential program, or they are employed. And in order to do that, we've gotta get to them a little earlier. That brings me to two additional things. I wanna make sure that you are aware that your economic development department has a gigantic event April the 2nd, so that all of our 7th graders will be exposed to hands-on activities from various industries in our area. This will occur at RCC, but again, how can a 7th grader know that they want to be, I'm gonna use welder again, if they've never seen welding occur? So that happens in the 7th grade. It will be happening April the 2nd, and it's your county's, our county's first event of this type. You do have a one-page summary of what I've talked about. You do have four pages of more in-depth information that tell you how we got where we are and what our future plans are. I would invite questions, you're welcome to ask now, but also, I'll leave my card with Ms. Jennifer, and we invite questions at any time. Again, Jennifer Lester is the apprenticeship coordinator for the community college. Once the students graduate, they begin to work with her, and I work with this in the school system. I do wanna emphasize, nobody owns the Rock Top program, except the citizens of Rockingham County, because all of the companies are coming, companies are coming together, citizens are coming together. We appreciate the support that you give us by funding us in the schools, by funding the community college, because that's the only way that we are able to do this, to bring this, these opportunities to our students. If you would like to know additional funding needs, just talk to us. But no, seriously, we do appreciate the fact that you are strong supporters, and we enjoy seeing the county commissioners at all of the events that we are at. So thank you for allowing me to talk to you, and if you have questions, it's fine. If you go away later and have them, just email me.
Commissioner Travis? What can we do as citizens to help promulgate these programs?
Okay. As citizens, one thing we need to realize, we need to encourage every student to find their path. Not grandma's path and not mama's path. There are more, there are a number of paths out there. We need to encourage our students to think about these, think about careers early. As citizens, if you have an entrepreneurial business, or if you have a business that's gone beyond entrepreneurial and you own several businesses or whatever, to invite students in to see those sites. We have, in the high school, there is an internship class where a student can come and work with you for an hour and a half every day for a semester. Anything that allows students to see actually what's going on in the workforce. Also, anytime, anyone, any citizen, commissioner, anyone, any career that you would like to have an opportunity to speak to students about what you do, please let us know, because we don't know what everyone does, and our students don't either. We would like to give you an opportunity to come into our classes. We would also welcome the opportunity for employers to come and talk to students about the real world. I'm gonna talk as a teacher for just a minute. As a teacher, I can tell a student, you need to be on time, and you need to not miss, and you need to make good grades, but they say, aw, that's what the teacher is supposed to say. But when a human resource director comes into a classroom and says, when you miss the third day, the third time, without that doctor's note, I fire you, it means more coming from, from that. So any involvement, please let us know. If you would like to be talking to our students, we would love to have you do that. And then also, when you hear Rock Top, when you hear a student say that, ask them what they're talking about. Give them an opportunity to talk about it to you. Please also understand that education has changed since grandma's day, and call, call a counselor, and talk about your student, and say, what is going on? What is this all about? Okay, sorry, long answer.
That's a good answer. And for your Connect program, Kim, who should, if we know businesses and employers out there that would like to participate in Connect or anything else?
In the Connect program, the primary contact is gonna be myself. My name is Lydia Craddock, C-R-A-D-D-O-C-K. I'm the only Lydia Craddock in the school system, so if you call, I'm stationed actually at Reesville High School. For any of the other projects, either Ms. Jennifer Lester, she's the only Jennifer Lester at RCC, or myself, we can be the starting point and get you to the correct resources. Does that help? I will leave cards for, I tell you, I've got quite a few, so I'll just leave them here in case anyone of the public would like to.
Yeah, I would encourage anybody listening to the broadcasts or here tonight, if you know somebody, an employer, especially service, electricians, plumbers, and masons, and carpenters, have them get in contact. This is their chance to get good help for the summer, plus help a young person learn what career path is suitable for them. And so I applaud RCC and the school system. I think this is a track that may have been overlooked in the past, but I'm glad to see such vigorous application. Any other comments, gentlemen? Thank you, Mrs. Craddock.
Thank you, gentlemen. And Jennifer, thank you.
Lance? You or Patricia?
I'll go first, and then we'll get Ms. Galloway up. So in light of what has happened recently in Buncombe County, in the city of Eden, Riverbend, and Landis, I thought it would be prudent for the county to develop and enact a policy for appointed and elected official expenditure of use. This policy that you've got, I updated it, it is, it's a policy to safeguard the county, and it is, it's recommended to protect the integrity of our organization and hold financial accountability all the way from the top down. So in this, the county manager, the county attorney, and the county clerk of the board will provide a monthly expenditure report, including any overnight travel and expenses to the chairperson, and then I added and carved and copied the remaining Board of Commissioners. The commissioners will provide a detailed The commissioners will provide a detailed report of any overnight travel to the clerk of the board, who in turn will provide that, that report to me, and also will carbon copy the board of commissioners. If the finance officer, which is Pat, has any concerns regarding travel or purchases made by myself, or the clerk of the board, or the county attorney, she will address this concern with the chairperson. And likewise, if she has any concerns with the travel of the commissioners, she will address that with me, and I will address it with the other commissioners. So I think this is a good, solid policy. Again, unfortunate things happen in, in the public office, which we see from time to time, and hopefully this will be a policy that will make sure that it doesn't happen here in Rockingham County. Or at least at the county level.
Okay, we're going to look at these, this is A of item lines. We'll look at these separately. Any questions from the board here concerning that? Mr. Berger, you and I talked about it at length.
He's, he made the correction.
Okay. I think a motion is in order at this point.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And seconded. Further discussion? Here none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed by nay. Motion is carried unanimously. Item B.
Ms. Gallo? We wanted to kind of update you guys on some, again, in light of some of the things that have happened, wanted to assure you some of the things that the county's taken to protect us with certain circumstances with travel and so forth. Pat?
Thank you. Good evening. I just want to give you just a quick overview of kind of what the process is in our office to kind of give you a little assurance of what we do to a comfort level. So we have mainly the, the expenditure transactions are guided by three policies that we have. We have a purchasing policy, we have procurement card policies, and we have travel policies. Purchasing policies, we require purchase order for any purchase that's over $500. We have system-generated purchase orders. The department will put in their request. Each request is reviewed at least by two finance staff members, sometimes three. They go through our purchasing agent for a first review, that it meets all the purchasing requirements, laws, and policies. It goes through a financial review by either the deputy finance director or myself to make sure it meets budget appropriation requirements and posting strategies. If it is a capital outlay line item, then it goes through a third review to make sure it meets our capitalization thresholds, thresholds and budget appropriations. Once the purchase order is issued, the purchase order goes back to the department. The department will see the invoice directly, they'll approve, the sign off, match up the purchase order, send it to finance. It goes to an accounts payable, finance staff person who enters, who reviews everything, make sure everything's in order, keys it into the system, writes the check. Once the check's written, the check, batch of checks, along with all the invoices, goes to a whole separate finance staff person for review of all the checks, checks going out that week, to make sure everything matches up, everything's signed off on. So just purchasing alone, we have a lot of level reviews to ensure everything meets our criterias in our policies. Procurement cards, small purchases that are under $500 in travel costs are the only things that go on our procurement cards. The card, the department head requests their staff or individual who needs a procurement card for that to be issued. They make that request, it has to be approved by finance. They sign, the cardholder will, will sign a procurement card user agreement, which basically tells them the criteria for being able to use the P-card. It's very, it, it does let them know that it's for county use only, no personal use in any infractions on the policy. They can, will revoke the card from them. At the end of every month, the department does a reconciliation of their individual P-cards. It comes up to finance. All the original invoices or receipts are attached to that P-card. I have a staff member who looks at every P-card transaction for the county for that month, and makes sure that it's on the reconciliation, that the proper documentation is there, and secures the documentation or additional explanation if it's needed before we process that. Then we have travel policies. We're under an environment now where all travel must be pre-approved. County manager implemented that probably a year and a half, two years ago. No one incurs travel costs without coming through a preapproval process with the finance department. They must attach a copy of the agenda, of the course, the meeting that they're attending, and the agenda, the dates, along with their estimated cost to be incurred. And we check off everything, that all those costs that they're planning to claim, that they are planning on claiming, meet our travel policies. We check for dates, make sure hotel costs are correct, the right dates, that if the conference doesn't start till noon, that they're not getting overnight stay the night before. If meals are included in the conference, they're not allowed to claim those meals. So we make sure all those, we check all those boxes off. Once they incur the travel and come back, then they submit the reimbursement form to be reimbursed. Again, it goes to another level of check to make sure all those costs were appropriate, meet our policy. If they charge anything to the P-card on the travel, it goes to the staff person that reviews all the P-card, and she again also looks to make sure it meets the travel policy requirements. December, we did hold a mandatory department-wide purchasing training, just to refresh everybody, make sure everybody was very familiar with all of our purchasing policies. So all the department heads attended, and all their primary staff that are involved in anything purchasing in their department. We had a really good turnout, and everybody attended. And I've got a lot of good feedback from that, that training, so I think a lot of folks, things that they didn't realize, they now realize, and that was, that was very beneficial. All our financial transactions of the county come through the finance department in some form or fashion. The goal of the finance department, and my staff knows this day in, day out, when that transaction is completed, posted, and filed, it better be able to stand on its own. It better. We do not need to explain it down the road. It better be standing on its own when we file it away. All of our transactions go through independent audit. They pull a random sample of any of the transactions that have flowed through our department. They review our, all of our policies. They make sure that everything about that transaction met our policies. If we are not in compliance, it does land in the financial report. That financial report is open to the public, county manager, and you guys will get a copy as well. We had a new firm, this is the second year we've had this firm, they have been extra thorough. They have pulled a lot of transactions, they have asked a lot of questions, they have relooked at our policies. So they have, they've been a lot more thorough than I've seen in the past, other firms. My finance staff, they know if anything does not feel comfortable with them, if it's an unusual transaction, something they've not seen before, they know to ask the deputy finance director or myself. If we can't get it clarified through the department or understanding, then I go straight to county manager, and we get clarification from him if need be. These are our policies and procedures. These are ways we implement internal controls. And I just want to assure you, the internal controls, they are designed to reduce the risk. They do not eliminate, there's always a chance that something will fall through, a little mess, but, but they are designed to just eliminate, to reduce that risk and not necessarily eliminate it. So that's in a nutshell, kind of how many times we're looking at things. Do you have any specific questions or concerns that you want to, to discuss?
Questions, gentlemen? May I assume that these policies and procedures are already in, in place?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
So we would not require a motion on this case?
Just for information purposes.
Pat, I'd just like to say thank you. I know you do a great job, and I appreciate the county manager when we first started discussing this, and, and he and I were, were discussing it. He moved right along, and I appreciate it. And like I said, we're looking at this from an organization, not a personnel matter. I mean, it's just, we're putting it in place, taking names off the org chart, and look what we could do to put in place so that there's never any doubt, and there's complete transparency about what's going on. So thank you, and thank you.
Thank you.
I think we'll move on to item 10. Mr. Paul Murray?
Good evening. I wanted to come before you tonight to provide an update on where we are with the county's fellows program. Just as some background, the county began participating in the current fellows program, which was put on by the NCACC back in 2015. The program helped to place recent MPA graduates with counties for a one-year fellowship. This was good for both the county and for the student, as the student got hands-on experience with upper-level management that they likely wouldn't have gotten just coming out of grad school, and the county got a full-time position to help with projects and other professional work, and reduced costs thanks to a subsidy offered by the NCACC. This subsidy meant that the county's contribution for this full-time FTE was approximately $25,000 a year. The county has had three fellows to date, and generally, this program has been a success. In recent years, however, the NCACC and the county have struggled to find qualified candidates for this fellowship. This past year, for example, we had one fellow that we were excited and wanted to offer the position to, but they accepted another offer in another county. So our plan this year was just to sit out one year and reevaluate a new crop of candidates this spring. However, we were recently contacted by a representative from the new lead for North Carolina program that functions very similarly to the past NCACC fellows program. This new program is put on by the school of government in partnership with the City County Managers Association, the League of Municipalities, and the NCACC. So the NCACC is aware that we're, we're looking at this, and encourages it. It seeks to place recent college graduates, and not necessarily masters, but college graduates, in counties that they have a connection to for one-year fellowships. This is the part I was kind of impressed with. They really make this a cornerstone of their program to try to have the fellows have some connection to the places what they're going to be serving. And similar to the NCACC program, thanks to some financial assistance they offer, the cost to the county is also about $25,000, so no difference in money. Few of the specifics on this program, it's fairly new. This would be the second cohort that they'll have. The first cohort's students have been in areas like Anson County, Greensboro, Hendersonville, and Robeson County. And I reached out to Anson County, have a colleague down there, and he let me know that they're very happy with their, their candidate that they have. The fellows can come from universities all over North Carolina, just a few, UNC Chapel Hill, East Carolina, Appalachian State, NC State, Wake Forest, and Duke. So kind of the reason I'm here before you guys this evening, just to give you an update, is the applications from local governments are due on the 15th of January. If we're selected, we'll get to interview our prospective fellows March of 25th through the 26th. The local government will then have to enter into a one-year contract with the school of government and the fellow by April the 15th, and then sometime between July the 1st and July the 15th, fellow will start. So while we're definitely not guaranteed to get into this program, we do plan to apply for it, for consideration the upcoming cohort. The executive director that reached out to the county manager seems very excited that we're interested, and said that we're one of his target jurisdictions. Few things, really just a couple of things I haven't hit on. While we haven't seen the contract for this particular program, when we do, we'll ensure it gives the county the right to end the fellowship at any time if it's not productive for the county. We don't anticipate that being a problem, but always want to make sure that it's a good, a good fit for the county and for the student. And this position will also require us to amend the pay plan, because the current minimum for the NCACC county management fellows is higher than what this new salary would be. You don't have to do anything this evening. We can do that with the budget process, and this new position won't start until after July 1. So that's where we are with this program. Wanted to give an update, and happy to answer any questions if you have.
Mr. Chairman? Paul, I'm excited that if selected to participate in this program, that we're looking at a student with a connection to Rockingham County and a college graduate. I know we work hard to get our young folks to come back to the county, and if this can be a mechanism to get a professional, a young, young professional coming back into our county to get involved in county government, it's a very good program. And so I thank you for, for looking into this.
Certainly agree with that. Further comment? Appreciate the update. Mr. Manager, any new business? New business from the commissioners? Here none. We'll move on to item 12, which is Commissioner comments. Commissioner Travis?
No comment tonight.
Commissioner Pertle?
I'll be very brief. I'd like to congratulate the Readsville High School football team. I think they won again.
They won again?
So congratulations to, to that group of young men, and the staff, and the high school, and for all their hard work. And also, I had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Rodney Cates, our emergency service director, and he assured me that we're not going to have three foot of snow tomorrow. So leave the milk and bread on the shelves. So that's all that I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Pertle. Mr. Commissioner Berger?
Well, I echo Commissioner Pertle's comments. As far as the Readsville football team, congratulations to Readsville and everything that they have achieved this year. It's quite an accomplishment to win a, a state championship, and they are doing it on a routine basis. So we, we certainly congratulate them for that. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, taking your time to find out what's happening in your local government. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Want to recognize Keith Duncan, a former commissioner who's visiting with us tonight. Thank you for being here, Keith. Doug Isley from the school board is here. I believe he's the only school board member. We do have the president of our local Republican, and Sheriff Page. We appreciate you gracing our domicile here. I would also like to particularly thank Readsville High School, because I'm going to see a friend from Surrey County who was just real confident that they were going to mop up the floor with Readsville, and it did not come to pass. So thank you, that. I also got a comment about the Readsville football team. Apparently, firsties did a, a thank you lunch for them, and I talked to a couple individuals that, that were there. And of course, everybody knew about the football credentials of the Readsville football team, but these gentlemen had a lot to say about the courtesy and deportment and poise of these individuals, and I think it speaks well for the high school and the coach of the football team over there, that he is doing training beyond football skills. So kudos to Readsville High School on that. If you would go to, when you get a chance, go to the county website, you'll have an opportunity to recommend volunteers of the month. This is something your commissioners recognize when they're brought up, they're reviewed by a citizens committee, and we're looking for folks that have made contributions to our county, and we'd like to recognize them and hold them up as an example. Also, you will find on the county website a long list of boards and committees that need volunteers, citizen volunteers to, to fill, and certainly would welcome that sort of participation. So county website, and you'll find a subject on volunteers, and both those categories will be covered. I'd like to talk with you just a moment about pride in Rockingham County. I would hope that in this new year, as we look at resolutions and intents to improve where we need to improve, or maybe adjust priorities, that we look at what a great county we have, and why it justifiably deserves our support and our pride. And I would submit to you that we, in creating a culture of pride, would look at things like the Rock atop program that emphasizes punctuality, and integrity, and service, loyalty, honesty, and so forth. But not only that, taking action to be good citizens that mentor the neighbor, or mentor your children, whether you're an uncle or your aunt. These young people need some encouragement, and they need some folks to talk to them about the examples and the payoff for taking up these habits. I'd like for our community, community to be more vigilant about safety, whether it's an elderly neighbor, or a child, or something. Sheriff, I'm sure you'd welcome any call. Rodney, I'm sure you'd welcome any sort of help along that line. We're always interested in avoiding hazards, accidents, fires, you name it. And sometimes our vigilance will do that. Also, an attitude of responsibility within our culture would be most useful. That's something, Commissioner Travis, that would certainly help our anti-littering campaign. If we assume the smallest piece of trash to be too much trash, and we put it where it belongs, pretty soon that will catch, catch fire, and we'll have a much cleaner county. We're doing well, but not as well as we need to be. You just need to drive down a few of our roads, and you'll notice that littering is still a problem. Anyhow, that's my contribution tonight, is to advocate developing this culture of pride in our county, and it can be manifest in many different ways, environmentally, economically, emotionally, and by all means in support of those institutions like our school system that can always use our help. So, gentlemen, any other comments for, or actions for tonight? If not, I would encourage somebody to make a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Salute.
Second.
And seconded. Further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. Got it.